We will now reconvene the Valley View School District meeting for October 22nd, 2012, despite what it looks like on television, I am not here by myself. Can we have a pledge, please?
Looks like I'm by myself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Quigley is out of town, Member Campbell is also out of town, and we will move to the affirmation of the Board of Education's mission statements and board beliefs. Typically at this point, we read the mission statements. I thought I would do something different tonight, I thought I would read our belief statement. The belief that every student has the capacity to learn and to achieve his or her full potential is the foundation on which our efforts rest. We hold high expectations and provide supports to ensure academic success for all students in Valley View School District regardless of their race, gender, income, geography, disability, or native language. Agenda approval and agenda revisions. Dr. Mitchum.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to ask the Board to remove Agenda Item 12.2, Resolution Number 1329, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force. I then ask that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Consumer agenda items, Dr. Mitchum.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve consent agenda items 5-1 through 5-4, Board Meeting Minutes, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, Student Activity, Contracts, Humphrey Middle School and Scholastic Book Fairs, with Scholastic Book Fairs, Gifts from Independence and Oakview Elementary Schools as well as Bolingbrook High School.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Student and Staff Recognition Superintendent Mitchell.
First to the podium, Mr. Michael White, Principal Michael White for Bolingbrook High School.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, Community Members. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Bolingbrook High School's pillar of Valley View, Larry Fisher. Larry, you got a fan club, too. Larry is a National Board Certified Teacher who is always willing to help his students. Larry has always contributed, he's been a contributing member of the Fine Arts Department for six years. Larry has always chaperoned and sponsored the students' field trip to enrich their experiences. Larry is well-respected, is well-respected by his students and colleagues at all times, and Larry is a true advocate of all students at Bolingbrook High School. He is a very special man who looks for those students who is needy and that need his attention, and he seeks those students out, those students seek him out. I have to share with you, being the new guy at the school, that he has been an absolute pleasure to work with because he is willing to do those things necessary to get the job done in the music department, in our school, and for the students. On behalf of the Board of Education, I present to you Bolingbrook High School's pillar, Larry Fisher. Larry is joined by his mother.
Next, from Hermanson Elementary School Principal Jackie Mitchum.
It is with great pleasure to nominate Ms. Dani Shannon as a pillar of Valley View. I have known Ms. Shannon for almost five years as a social worker at Hermanson Elementary. Ms. Shannon is well-known for the numerous positive relationships she has developed over the years and for her genuine care and understanding approach towards the students and families at Hermanson. She has gone above and beyond for our families and our school. Ms. Shannon is our wrap facilitator, homeless liaison, has conducted the autism mentoring program, and is part of our crisis team, to name a few. She goes out of her way to provide support or resources for families who face domestic abuse, mental health issues, as well as providing interventions within the building to support the emotional needs of our students. She is very well-respected and trusted by many. Ms. Shannon is often the social worker who is sought after when there is a crisis in another building to help support the students and families of our district. Ms. Shannon's heart and beliefs are committed to Valley View students. It is with great excitement to recognize her as a pillar of Valley View.
Good evening, School Board Members, Senior Leadership, Parents, and Community Members. Joining me tonight to introduce our pillar to you is our Assistant Principal, Mr. Tim Wyler. It is our honor to present to you our pillar of Valley View School District 365, you, Mr. Josh Gage, Language Arts Teacher and Key Leader at Jane Adams Middle School. Mr. Gage's contributions to Valley View and Jane Adams Community are numerous. Through his teaching and coaching responsibilities, Mr. Gage consistently challenges his students to give their very best effort and to achieve more every day. Mr. Gage's definition of best effort does not just include academics and athletics, it also includes elements of character. Mr. Gage gets the best from students by embracing every student's strengths and by continuously setting goals with students to maximize their potential. By building relationships with students, he is able to call upon a wealth of instructional and motivational strategies in order to find the best tool to meet their individual needs. Mr. Gage does not just challenge his students and players to be the best, he also challenges himself, his colleagues, and our school to strive for greatness. While Mr. Gage keeps perfecting his craft of being a leader, a role model, a coach, mentor, and teacher, he embraces a get-it-done outlook that sets high standards for himself, his department, and our school. It is truly a privilege to work side-by-side with Mr. Gage. Thank you.
Now we move on to Student Recognition. Our AP Scholars, first to the podium is Principal Michael White from Bolingbrook High School.
Again. The College Board have recognized 49 students from Valley View School District as AP Scholars. Of those 49 that were recognized, 32 of them come from Bolingbrook High School, which make me extremely proud to be working with students that come to school for academic purposes and work hard. I also want to share with you, just a little bit, in terms of, we have 10 AP courses, and as you know, in order to recognize those AP courses, in order for them to be recognized as scholars, there's a certain amount of things that they have to go through in order to get there. In order to be an AP Scholar, there are four levels. In order to be an AP Scholar, a student has to have a 3.0 on all the exams and on at least three or more of those exams across the board. Our students, Caleb Munson, who's the first person I'd like to recognize, he took an AP English, an AP History, and also an AP Euro. He's currently taking two AP courses right now. I just wanted you to just step out in front, and he's here, joined with, step out, step out, Caleb. He's joined by his parents. Very proud. I have Neil Seth, who's also joined by his parents and then joined by his grandma. Is Grandma here? Come on up, Grandma, you came all the way, you deserve to be here, very proud. He's joined, Neil took AP Euro, he also took Environmental Science online on his own, and he also took an AP World History on his own as well, with the assistance of his parents helping him through. Neil is currently taking five AP courses at this time. He's looking forward to getting fives, as he did on the first three that he took on, in terms of the five AP courses he's taken currently. He's taken Bio, AP Bio, AP Chem, he's taken AP Calc BC, and US History at this time at Bolingbrook High School. Very proud of you. Could you step out? You can step out and stay out. Yeah. You guys, you guys can stay out there. Also, a student that could not attend today, that's currently at Bolingbrook High School, is Amanda Wohunkel. She also is currently taking a number of AP courses here at Bolingbrook High School, but they all kind of know each other and able to talk through their AP courses and their goals throughout. I also like to share with you what it takes to be an AP Honor, and we have two students currently that are AP with honors. In order to be an AP with honors, you have to have a 3.5 average on four or more AP exams, all of them having to be three or higher, so you can't go below that three, you can't be a 2.5, right Neil? You got it. Okay, but we currently have Sandeep Butterwash, he was here, he was a National Merit Scholar finalist. Last Board Meeting that we had, you were introduced to him. And we also have Andrew Lenthonveritt, he is also a student that have honors, neither one of them can make it tonight. The final person that I'd like to introduce to you is Samantha Patterson. Samantha is AP Honor with Distinction. For AP Honor with Distinction, you had to have a 3.5 or higher on five or more AP tests, and she just got her recognition just recently in terms of the distinction piece. Samantha, and I know Neil, are both shooting for that National AP Honor Scholar, which is actually a 4.0 or higher on eight or more AP exams, and I love that they have those kind of aspirations academically. I just love, we hear it about basketball, we hear it about football, but we don't hear about it as often in the classroom, and we've got people at Bolingbrook High School that's shooting for that, and they make me very proud. Samantha, could you please step out? She's joined by her mom and dad as well. Let's give them a round of applause. Again, our goal is to, this time next year, have, we had 32, I'd love to see us have 64, and to continue doubling that along the way as a result that we believe that academics are important to us in Bolingbrook High School. Okay? If we can, can we come and shake you guys' hand? I know it's a lot of them, but they're very, very special.
Good evening, Vice President Goojus, Members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, Audience, and Community Members. My name is Gina Smith, and I'm the Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction at Romeoville High School, and joining me tonight is Kristen Ogble, Core Content Administrator for Literacy. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing our students who earned the distinction as AP Scholars. As Mr. White noted, an AP Scholar is granted to a student who earns a three or higher on three or more AP exams. Last spring, Romeoville High School had 17 students earn this honor. 14 of those students graduated, so tonight, we are honoring three of our AP Scholars who are currently seniors at Romeoville High School. Our first student is Mary Getogo. Last year, Mary earned a three on the English Language and Composition exam, a four on the US History exam, and a four on the Biology exam. Congratulations, Mary. Our next student is Michael Murray. Last year, Michael earned a four on the English, Michael earned a four on the English Language and Composition exam, a three on the European History exam, and a four on the US History exam. Congratulations, Michael. And our last student being honored tonight is Nicholas Sote. Last year, Nicholas earned a four on the English and Language Composition exam, a four on the US History exam, and a five on the Biology exam. Congratulations, Nicholas, and thank you very much for this opportunity to recognize our students.
At this time, if you received an award, or you wish to leave now, is a perfect time, but you are more than welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, but if you do wish to get home, and, I don't know, there's a couple of things on television you may want to watch tonight, so I understand.
Can we all go?
No, you can't go. Just a couple of things on TV going on tonight. All right. Liaison reports, any and all. Seeing none. Audience participation, stakeholders or individuals or groups may present their views to the Board at this time. Action Reports, Dr. Mitchum.
Vice President Goojus, I'd like for the Board to approve the student due process cases A through F as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
I'd also like the Board to approve as presented the residency case 12-064.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action Reports, Assistant Superintendents for Education, Ms. Smith and Mrs. Kinder.
Thank you, Vice President Goojus. Tonight, Action Report 10.1 is an addendum to a previously approved Board Policy regarding the grading scale. The revision is reflected in the corrected percentage points and quality points for both the weighted and non-weighted scales. These changes would be effective beginning with this school year, 2012, 2013. In simple terms, this change was made since we have plus and minus grades on the grading scale, the quality points need to be reflected as such, and we had a mistake with the points that were listed in the previous policy.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
And I'm Vice President Goojus, I'm here to present Action Report 10.2. All applications for recognition of schools for SY 1213 have been submitted and are ready for approval.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action Report, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, Mr. Ghazathi.
Yes, Action Report 11.1 is a renewal of our contract with Transworld Systems Incorporated for a accounts receivable system. This year, we took a look at three alternative vendors to compare services and features that could be provided. At this time, we are recommending to continue with Transworld Systems. Their system works great with our student information system, allows us greater flexibility in how we pursue our non-payers, and they also have a very strong guarantee contained within their contract in terms of return on investment of guaranteed 200% on our outlay. We will continue to actively manage who gets to put into the system and record all payments as they're received, meaning all the cash and payments come to us, they don't go to the collection firm, and that was something that we also felt very strongly about in terms of being able to control, again, how things get recorded and how they're accounted for moving forward. So at this time, I am asking us to approve the contract renewal with Transworld Systems for establishing 10,000 accounts in the cost of $7.75 per account, or $77,500 for a two-year contract.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action Report 11.2 is a recommendation for a snow removal contract for Bolingbrook High School. We currently have a contract expiration with Berry Landscaping that was only for one year. Unfortunately, they did not live up to our standard for snow removal at Bolingbrook High, and therefore, we did solicit new bids for the coming winter season. Several bids were received, there's a matrix provided there for you. We had four bidders that responded to our request, and at this time, the low bidder is Georgia's Landscape. They have provided service to us in the past, in fact, they were the first provider at Bolingbrook High School when it first opened three years ago, or, I'm sorry, for the first three years back in 2004. Since then, we've had a different provider, different snow removal company in various years, and I'm happy to say that Georgia's was probably our best, and so, we're happy that they were able to sharpen their pencils, so to speak, and provide us a contract with an estimated value of $72,543 for 1213. We arrived at that estimated figure by averaging all of the snowfalls over the last four winter seasons. Obviously, in 2010-11, February actually of 2011 was our blizzard, as you might recall, but we felt it was important to factor that in because it could happen again, and so, we like to come up with a budget estimate so you have an idea of what the contract value is, but again, it is just an average. So, we are recommending Georgia's at this time.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. I think I got a motion by Member Bull, I have a second by Ms. Hanson. Discussion? Is he aware, is our contractor aware of the changes that have been made at Bolingbrook High School to make the parking more accessible to visitors, and how that may affect the snow plowing?
I don't know if it's been reviewed as of yet, certainly it will be every year, we make sure we review any and all changes and any and all expectations of where they can stage equipment and so forth, so I'm not sure if it's been done quite yet.
I wouldn't want to interfere with that because I think Principal White's made the building more accessible, and we'll make sure that...
They're typically in there before any cars are in the lot, so...
Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action Report, Executive Director for Human Resources, Mrs. Owens.
Thank you, Vice President Goojus. Action Report 12.1 this evening, we're seeking your approval on the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. We have approval for 22 separate items on certified personnel, 23 for classified, one for certified administrative personnel, and two for classified administrative personnel.
Need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus, within this action report, we approve tonight the hiring of Ms. Tammy Khan for Director of CTE. Tammy, if you'd like to stand. Tammy is from Kainland High School District. She has 14 years of experience in the CTE area, the last nine years as Department Chair, and then the last year as Data Warehouse Coordinator. Welcome to Valley View, we're glad to have you.
This is a replacement position, correct?
Yes, it is.
Superintendent's Information Report. No report. Legal Services.
You know, I just wanted to comment on one case that just came out on Thursday, and it kind of affects the snow plowing. So if Georgia's landscaping screws up, and there's a slip and fall in the parking lot, Supreme Court clarified that even in a situation where you have non-natural accumulation of snow, in other words, your snow plowing company plows snow in your lot and near a parking spot, and somebody gets out of their car and slips, not on the natural accumulation, but on the non-natural accumulation, in other words, where the shoveling company messed up, if you will, governmental entities are immune under the Torrid Immunity Act. So Georgia's landscaping might still be on the hook, but as a governmental entity, we'd be covered by the Torrid Immunity Act. So that just came out on Thursday. That's it.
Thank you. Association Federation Reports, AFT.
No report.
Valley View Council.
No report.
Valley View Office Personnel Council. Seeing none. Old business. Is there any new business? At this time, we'll take questions from the public, from stakeholders or individuals. Please note to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Seeing none. Announcements by the Board. I have a couple. One, want to congratulate Hermanson for... One, I want to congratulate Hermanson for what I hear was an outstanding reading night last week. Also want to promote at RHS, November 2nd through the 4th, their play Trouble with Cats will be presented at Bolingbrook High School this weekend, October 26th through the 28th. Witness for the Prosecution will be their fall play. We have two community forums left, one at Romeoville High School on October 30th, and one for Spanish speakers at Bolingbrook High School on November the 1st. We have a community forum Wednesday, November 14th, on the heroin issue here in Will County, and the BHS Magicals are November 30th at 6:00 PM. Any other announcements by the administration?
None.
Announcements by the public? Seeing none. I would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned.